Option to go with a prefab or let them design it on site.
I'm okay with that.
Okay?
So Nancy, why don't you think that making Reta one way is a good idea?
Um, I think it's gonna have unintended consequences of forcing traffic off onto other streets. I think new urbanism is going away from one-way streets and going to two-way streets and using other traffic calming measures to create a better urban environment from all of the minimal training I've had. I just think that it would fit our, the character of our community better. And so I'd rather see us look at other ways to slow the traffic down. I don't disagree, we don't want to create a thoroughfare.
Yeah, it's not so much as slowing the traffic down, which of course would be nice. It's about what happens on that street. And to be able to use that street, already the runners use it, the bikers during, to have just a one, you know, a one lane, one way, and using the other one for running and biking and events that happen there. Because in the wintertime, it's already happening. And now you have, and now all the cars, and it doesn't matter whether we have official parking or not, they're all parked there anyway. So they're all parked up and down the street, and the bikers are on the road and they're backing in. And it's really, and it's wonderful, don't get me wrong, it's a wonderful place to be. In the wintertime, in the season, people are all over that street. And they're walking and they're biking and the dogs, because they're getting off the sidewalks because there's too many people on the sidewalks. So it's really more of a boardwalk atmosphere. It really is. I mean, I see it every day.
When the harbor walk is a 20-foot wide promenade.
Won't matter.
It's gonna make a big difference.
It's going to make a big difference, but it's not gonna, you still have the cyclists that do not want to be on the harbor walk. And not all of them are the go-fast kind of guys. It's the people riding the bikes, it's the people trying to get away from the harbor walk, you know, trying to get away from that traffic, because it will be. I mean, that's all, I'm just saying, it's more of a, when I look at it, it's more of that place that you go to visit, and it's that street, and you're gonna have a waterfront activity there, the harbor walk is gonna be there, it's gonna be wider, I'm gonna see people out there painting, and all kinds of stuff going on, so there's gonna be even more activity down there. And so it's gonna be sprawled out.
And I think to Kim's point, the diagonal parking is what changes it from what you're talking about, new urbanism, two-way streets, traffic calming, that's all finding good on a street that doesn't have the diagonal parking conflicting with two lanes of traffic, which I think is probably the biggest concern, which, you know, closing the park off to the cars, I'm okay with that. But we do have to accommodate parking, and that's really the way that we've come up with it, and, you know, unless we change that, I think Kim has a good point, that it's another conflict. It's another conflicting issue with the traffic on Reta. Gary?
I think that with the ambiance that's developing there, that's already there, ambiance in there, I think this is a good point. I think the one question that I don't understand, and I'm not sure that anybody does, is how does it affect the traffic on both Marion and Olympia? I think that question needs to be ascertained, but that doesn't mean that I think it should rule that out. I think we need to open up that conversation and quantify, so that we know what those other effects are. And assuming if they are totally horrible effects, then it's one thing, and if they're not, if they're just minor inconvenience effects, it may be still worthwhile, or the appropriate thing to do is to visit the traffic pattern along this whole beautiful park area, because it's part of the ambiance, and you're right. It's really not, in the winter, it's not a street, it's a mall-type boulevard slash, also the cars go down the middle of the street.
They do.
And it can be kind of interesting navigating that at times. So anyway, I think that's, I think that I would like to see us address how this would affect both Marion and Olympia, and then bring the conversation back in earnest, then how do we do it? And how do we do it well?
Tom?
I would be very pleased to continue the conversation along Kim's thoughts. Traffic calming is something that I would maybe like to see in the area. With the direction that the diagonal parking is right now, all of the traffic flow would have to be going from south to north, if it looked like. And so it needs a broader study, as you mentioned.
And I assume we're talking from Harvey on, so that the hotels aren't affected at all, and our parking lot into City Hall's not affected, so, you know.
I think the traffic would have to go that way, anyway.
You mean east to west?
Yes.
Toward Fisherman's Village.
Towards Fisherman's. Towards Fisherman's Village.
And city staff can definitely do a conceptual, you know, drawing of, or conceptual study of what that could look like, in terms of how that could operate, and how it.
But would that study also put how it would affect Marion and Olympia?
In terms of the, in terms of the traffic volumes on Marion and Olympia, if you took all of the traffic off of Reta, Virginia, Charlotte, and probably Henry, and put them on Marion and Olympia, you still wouldn't do anything major to level of service on Marion and Olympia, because there's so little traffic on those two streets.
I think that's probably true, but I'd like to see some kind of quantitative explanation.
Yeah, I would too.
Well, and you don't have, since we don't want to close or put a bike path on Marion or Olympia, and to have one on Reta, and you're going right to Fisherman's Village, and the traffic that uses it now, yeah, there's some people that come down the road trying to race, you know, to miss, not have to go to that light at Marion. So they go down Reta, and really, they shouldn't be going that fast, because there's too much stuff going on there anyway. So it would deter them from even going that way, because they would know there's walking and biking and all of that kind of stuff going.
Well, you either have those people or the people going like 2.5 miles an hour.
Yes.
So you have the combination of those two people, so I try to avoid it as much as I can.
I agree, I agree.
Well, okay, so let's start with the initial look-see by staff, and then bring it back, and then we can explore what they found and see what the next stage would be.
We'll have it as an agenda.
Howard loves when we start making new agenda items, he gets all excited. Okay, so did we make it through every decision that we didn't make? To say that we want to talk about it again?
Point of clarification, I just want to make sure, because we'll have to start the MPO process, do, does City Council want to change the extents of that area for federal funding to the limits illustrated on this diagram?
So that's what we need to decide today?
For the purposes of getting that ball rolling, yes.
I'd say yes.
We don't have to start design today, but at least.
You're right, to get the bureaucracy settled.
Yes.
We need to stroll in that direction.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have discussion regarding urban farming and gardening in residential areas. Which I don't know, let's hear it, Terry. Chicken scratched.
Two chickens in every garage, no.
For the record, Terry, to observe and design. This is something, staff is getting more and more questions from residents who want to keep chickens, they want to have, for the eggs and everything, more and more gardening. We have the community gardens going on. Currently, the land development regulations really don't address any of it. When people are asking if they can keep chickens, all we have is the public nuisance animal, that they have to be sanitary and not create odor, not be, not become a nuisance essentially. And there are a couple of areas in the Moore Neighborhood Center district that there are people that have chickens. We did have somebody from Punta Gorda Isles whose child was in 4H, and they wanted a goat, and there's absolutely nothing in there that we could say, you really can't keep a goat in PGI. The current land development regulations say the, there is nothing that would prohibit gardening or landscaping in a yard. So if the climate was right, people could plant corn in their front yard. So we're kind of looking for direction, is this something that we need to look at, get addressed? Because, I mean, you've got composting, you've got a whole litany of things, with just the direction that everybody wants to go more, you know, self-sufficient, the organic vegetables growing themselves, just to make sure that we don't end up with unintended consequences. It's not so much to limit and say you can't do X, Y, or Z, but you could do it within these parameters that would be appropriate for the various neighborhoods.
I thought the community gardens were really for that purpose, so people could have a chance to go do their gardening. I think the more animals, I mean, chickens attract other animals as prey, because my friend lives out, you know, in Port Charlotte area and has land, and he couldn't keep the chickens, because they, prey kept coming and getting them. And as far as the gardening, same thing, I mean, the more, even the fruit trees, we see it all the time, they attract rats and rodents and all kinds of other things. So I would, I would think in the special residential overlay, that's why we have community gardens. I mean, if you have a little herb garden or something that's not obtrusive, is somebody really gonna complain about that? But actual crops, I don't, other than what's normal, you know?
Tomato.
Yeah, something small I would be okay with, but not like a whole plot of crops. I don't think I could tolerate that. Now composting, you can get a container, you can put those in containers. And again, nobody would really know unless it really smelled really bad or something like that, they wouldn't really know what was going on in there, and those things are actually really cool.
Yeah, but she's talking about spreading it over your garden, so for fertilizer.
Yeah, no.
Right?
Yeah, if the, yeah, if the ingredients, the items that are put in composting, well, one is a matter of making sure it's turned, and certain items that if they are allowed to be used in the composting can create a really obnoxious odor and gases.
My brother-in-law out in Jones Loop, he puts that fish emulsion on his garden, and that is, that is really nasty stuff.
So, no fish emulsion.
No fish guts.
I think that a couple of little issues to deal with here. I certainly don't want to see my neighbor planting a row crop down my swale, and then I have to ask Mark on how to thatch that, so that we can get proper drainage. That's certainly one extreme, but I think you also have to be careful, how do you, how do you define what a garden is? Okay? Are we talking about strictly vegetable garden, or are we talking about somebody that has, there's an empty lot next door, they buy the lot and they want to put an English garden in? Or they want to put an English garden type thing instead of a front lawn? These are beautiful things. And sometimes they can be incorporated with some green peppers and tomatoes and so forth, without it being obnoxious. And I certainly don't think we would want to not encourage a beautification of that sort. And then when it comes to the, to the animals, whether it's chickens or what have you, I certainly wouldn't want to see somebody have a 300-pound sow sitting in their backyard, okay? But if they have a little Vietnamese pot-bellied pig that is a pet, like a dog, I mean, you can, the neighbor can have a Great Dane and they can't have a 15-pound, you know, I'm just saying, the definition to me gets very murky, and I think, I think it needs to be done. Okay? I mean, we don't want to have a pig farm in PGI, but if somebody wants to have a pygmy goat, instead of a Great Dane, why not?
Are they a pet? Do they stay in the house?
Oh, the goats are a riot. Yeah, they'll stay in the house, and they're very playful.
Eat everything, like your furniture and your, I've heard they eat cars and they eat anything.
I had a dog that ate a couch. I mean, you know. If it's in their house, that's their problem. Okay? But I mean, you don't want, I don't think you want it, I'm just saying, if somebody wants to have something that's a little different, you know, people have pythons, they have turtles, they have all kinds of things, and I'm just saying is where do you draw that line? I just think it can be murky, but I think it's something that needs to be done.
Well, those are indoor, yeah, those are indoor type.
Like I said, a pot-bellied pig and even a pygmy goat can be, they can be house-trained and treated that way.
But they're pets, I don't think we need to regulate pets.
Yeah.
And that's my point. How do you define that? If I'm the neighbor, and I don't want my neighbor to have a pet that I don't like, that isn't a dog or a cat, how do I define that? And I think that just is something that would need to be addressed.
Nancy?
You know, I don't have a problem with a little bit of gardening. What I would not want to see us do, everyone talks about the ambiance of our community. I know in Historic District, there are lawns that aren't lawns, really, they're, and I've gone to cities where people have actually turned their front yards into vegetable gardens, and they look awful. And I know one of the goals that we had when we established the community garden at South County Regional Park was to make it very attractive, and to show that a community garden can be a very attractive space. So those goals have been achieved, but to actually have us, you know, I think we need to have some parameters. Now, I also would say that it may be different in like BSI and PGI, where you have canals, because then we're looking across the canal at something, whereas in Burnt Storm Meadows, people have much larger yards, and so they're maybe more appropriate for something in a yard like that. And so I don't think for us to restrict, maybe it's asking the Burnt Storm Meadows Property Owners Association, what do you think would be appropriate there? Similar to our neighborhood residential area, where they have backyards, and they can do some gardening. So I think that it's different spaces of our community, it varies.
We can also think about, like with our landscaping plans, we say percentages, like you can't have this much percentage mulch or shell, or this or that. It could be something like that, like you can't have more than 10% of your yard with vegetables or something. Like, so somebody would have an opportunity to do something small, we wouldn't want to say, no, you can't do anything at all, but then again, like you were saying, if my neighbor has green peppers growing next to my fence, and, you know, there's rats everywhere, that's, I'm gonna get upset by that, I'm already upset by the fruit all over the yard, you know, so.
I mean, I think staff would need, I'm sorry.
I think Tom was first.
Tom?
I'm okay with the gardening that people do. I wouldn't want to see it in the front of the house, next to the jungle gyms or anything like that, but, you know, some gardening.
The goat and the trampoline in the front yard.
Yeah.
And a small cow.
Wouldn't work. So, you know, I think as Nancy said, we have different areas that people may want to look at it a little bit differently. Not against small amounts of gardening in a residential area. I don't think I want to see goats or hens or chickens or even a rooster.
I'm agreeing with Tom about the front yard, especially downtown, I mean, and I think Burnt Storm Meadows is a perfect place, they have bigger yards out there, if you want to have a little garden with some tomato plants and green beans or whatever, I don't have a problem with any of that. And even downtown, we don't tend to get in each other's business much about that, the yards, but again, I go, I'm trying to, you know, the safety issue, when you're coming up to streets, Howard and I were having a conversation about, you know, if you're putting high stuff in those, you know, we have a couple little corners here that when you're coming up there, you can't see a bicycle coming, and they can't see me coming. And so if we start growing stuff, I know in Colorado, they grow stuff in the right-of-way downtown. They do have urban gardening down there, you know, right downtown, in their Historic District, so.
Well, I was a master gardener over the weekend for the secret gardens for the Hibiscus Festival, and the yard in which I was volunteering, there's all kinds of stuff in the right-of-way. I mean, there's very, very, very little grass. I mean, it's heavily vegetated, and it's, you know, it's all flowers, trees. That kind of thing, it's not a vegetable garden.
And it can be beautiful, just safety, I think, so if we keep it out of the front yards, maybe, and away from the right-of-way, not in the right-of-way at all.
And so what about in the special residential overlay? What are we, what are we thinking about the animal deal, that kind of, I mean, I don't think it.
I don't think I would.
I don't think so either.
I don't know where, how you would accommodate it easily, in PGI or BSI with the canals.
You couldn't put the proper fencing up to keep them in either. It would have to be a chicken wire.
So, to move this along. What I'm hearing is we need some regulations. We showed you what Charlotte County has, we need to get with the property owners associations in those respective areas, get their comments, and put together a proposal.
Yep.
Okay, we'll do that.
We can do that. No comments on animals?
We'll move on.
No.
You stayed legal on that discussion?
I just have one quick, oh, Kim, if you've been watching The Sun, Ralphie the Pig got away Saturday, and he was found, but he did dig himself underneath the fence, so Kim makes a point, how do you, how do you control them? You know, and a dog can do that stuff too, but that is an issue. I will see that.
Because they're not, you're not gonna keep them in with the kind of fences we have.
And the small yards.
Right, well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
We'd have to change the fence ordinance.
No, we can't talk about that again. Okay, Howard, recommendation from city officers?
I have none.
You have none? City attorney?
I have none.
You have none?
You're quiet today.
City clerk?
Yes, under boards and committees, we just have, under vacancies, we have two three-year terms on the utility advisory board, and two three-year terms on the planning commission. And that's it.
Can we nominate in a point?
No, this is just announcing the vacancy. We'll do that next time.
Thank you. Under policy and legislation, I have three things, four things. First, we were approached by a citizen who asked us to become a part of Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 2nd, and basically, there's a website, there's an organization promoting this, and it's wear orange on June 2nd to promote gun violence awareness. And while we're all for gun violence awareness, the website was a little, we had the city manager look at it, chief of police look at it, it was a little controversial. And so what, the suggestion that, the recommendation that Howard and I came up with, is that if there's consensus here, what we could do is a proclamation at the June 1st meeting, promoting gun violence awareness, but stay away from adjoining ourselves with any type of organization. We could still say June 2nd is Gun Violence Awareness Day, wear orange, if you so are inclined, or we could just not do anything at all.
Can we pick another color?
Yeah.
We can do whatever, or we can do nothing at all. I mean.
I would tend to think if an organization appeared to have some kind of an ulterior motive that was more of a political agenda, that we should probably stay away from it.
Okay.
I, having spent two years on the care board, I'm very much sensitive to crime and what the impact on people, and I feel for people, but I think that for us to connect ourselves with any kind of a political agenda when we are an apolitical organization would be, is important for us.
I think that's.
I agree.
I agree.
Well said.
Yes, okay, so we'll leave that one alone. I did send out save-the-date invitations to all the state and even federal officials that November 5th, the Saturday before Veterans Day will be the official dedication of the Vietnam Southwest, the Vietnam Wall of Southwest Florida. The reason why Saturday before Veterans Day was chosen is because on Veterans Day, there's already a lot of activities that are historically happening, and we didn't want to touch on any of that, so we thought going with the Saturday before, we could actually create a Veterans Week celebration. And so we'll be working toward that with the groups and the main committee people from the Vietnam Wall of Southwest Florida, Bill Akins and General Carr, and get the museum involved, and, you know, come together with the groups and try to create a Veterans Week with a lot more activities, and it would kick off probably Friday, something might happen Friday night, and then Saturday morning at 10:00 AM is the official dedication of the wall. And the wall will be completed before that time, so they did talk about, and Tom, maybe you know more details on this, that they would have like a soft opening or a soft something for the donors, before this official dedication with the big, the big hoo-ha. So that's what they were talking about when we met with them, and we did send out the save-the-date, so the bigger people can get it on their calendars and hopefully attend on November 5th.
That's great, thank you for attending that meeting.
Sure, and if the veterans, when the Veterans Week activities come about, we'll promote that and be a part of that.
Great opportunity for cross-marketing throughout our community on a variety of levels, Fisherman's Village, at restaurants, all kinds of things.
Yep. Any other thing from that meeting? If that was it, okay. Last night, the Nature Conservancy held a volunteer appreciation for the Trabu Harbor Walk Oyster Reef Event. They had the volunteers come in, and they gave a six-month monitoring update on the work that's been done and what they're seeing out there, and it's been, they're very encouraged by what they've been seeing out there. And Ernesto, who was there at the ribbon cutting, he made this really fabulous video. The video is beautiful, and it highlights Punta Gorda, and it's really nice, it's a little long, it's 17 minutes, so we talked to him about maybe condensing a three, four-minute video down for us that we could put on our website, because he did such a fabulous job with that. And he, he did all this volunteer on his own time, so we're hoping that he gives us a little commercial-type video that we can use. But he will, I think he will share the link, it's just not something we could show here in council chambers, because he did use some music in it that it could just be, you know, viewed personally, so it's a great video, it's really, really nice. And then I was going to announce that I will be running again, so.
Good.
I picked up my packet today, and we'll get working on that paperwork. And that's all I have. So council member comments, Kim?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Yes, at our last meeting, we decided to allocate funding for stormwater drainage, and it's not gonna get utilized until when, Howard, next fiscal year?
Assuming you, assuming that you adopt it in the September budget, we won't start till October 1st.
I'm wondering if there's any way that we could move that up in light of us approaching the typical summer rains and facing the same issues with water remaining in the swales, if there's any way that we could find some funding, if it's practical and if it makes sense to do it sooner rather than later.
The answer is yes, assuming you still want to include it in next year's budget. What we would do is, I mean, we have to put the scope of work together, bid the work out, approve the bids, get the contractor started. So frankly, you're really not gonna, I know how this works, I know how long it takes us through our processes. We probably won't have a contractor ready to get started September? What do you think?
Well, it's, it doesn't make, it's not practical, we're beyond the rainy season at that point, so it doesn't make sense.
I just know how, I just know how our bureaucracy works.
If there was a way to expedite it, I would have asked.
I don't see how we could. Not for a contract of $500,000. We have formal bid procedures, and I just know how we work.
I've already received emails from a specific street in Burnt Storm Isles about the list, I'm sure Mark knows what street it probably is.
We have work to do. And our goal is to start with the $500,000, and even if we do the work during the dry season, it's still gonna get done, and then bring to you in a number of months, not right away, the process to start in our intention for stormwater utility.
Okay, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Gary?
Just two items, one is, yesterday I had the privilege of attending the fallen officers' ceremonies yesterday, and I wanted to just point out that it was very solemn and moving. We have had 35 officers in our country so far this year that have fallen to harm's way, it's a continuing process, and I reflected that most of these individuals are people that have already put themselves harm's way in our services prior to becoming police officers, so I just want to acknowledge and appreciate theirs. And then also, I attended a meeting last week relative to the health of Charlotte Harbor and its seagrasses. last week, um, relative to the health of Charlotte Harbor and its seagrasses. A, uh, a great presentation was given. The aerial mapping has been done. And we have had a continual trend in last year, last two years has been a very good, uh, moment for the increasing of the seagrasses within Charlotte Harbor, which is an indication of the health of the harbors going the right way, along with the oysters.
Yes.
So, just wanted to point that out.
Um, I have one thing. And, um, last week, um, Howard had a meeting with Craig Holt from the Four Points by Sheraton and Joe Suriel, um, who's the owner. And, um, the discussion, uh, and then they subsequently, he, Joe Suriel subsequently emailed me. So Howard and I talked about this. The discussion was asking for, uh, some, had some lighting ideas around the Harbor Walk, which I don't think we need to discuss here. But he also had, wanted to know about some kind of embellishment along, uh, forty-one, I think both incoming into the city and outgoing, um, over the bridges, uh, to, uh, as to letting people know about, uh, it's kinda like, it's, it's, uh, attention-getting when you come into the city of Punta Gorda and when you're leaving the city of Punta Gorda, whether it's a banner. Um, I don't wanna talk about bridge banners per se, but whether it would be banners, um, or, or some kind of something. And so what Howard and I were talking about, um, back in two thousand eight, when team Punta Gorda's waterfront, uh, actually, it's not the waterfront, it's Maritime Committee, presented a waterfront master plan to the city, the then-city council. Uh, in it, there, the, uh, one of the members was Bill Pansari, who designed, was the architect on the Sunloft Center. And he had, uh, put together a lot of, uh, thoughts about shade structures along the Harbor Walk. And it, the, um, the, the idea spawned from the fact that years ago, back in, um, the early part of the, in the nineteen hundreds, there were summer houses along the Harbor Walk, what was then out at the great lawn of the Sher, of the, uh, the Hotel Punta Gorda. And they had a couple of, of round buildings that were large, that you could sit in and, and they were, and they were domed. And so taking those as, as cues, what, um, the architect's recommendation was to consider shade structures along the Harbor Walk that could be, uh, markers, so that you would know where you are on the Harbor Walk. And perhaps consider at the bridges, some kind of a little, uh, uh, parapet kind of shade structure. Maybe as you come off the bridge, where you were walking, you would walk under it, but that shade structure could have a sign that says, welcome to Punta Gorda. And when you, you know, uh, leaving Punta Gorda, there could be a similar kind of thing, uh, you're leaving Punta Gorda, but they would be markers to know where you are on the Harbor Walk and, and draw attention. Um, so anyway, it was one of the things that, um, Howard and I talked about was socializing this idea of something with, with council to say, do we wanna talk about this? Any, is there interest in talking about something that could be, it's, we're not talking about a big arch over the street kinda thing. Uh, that's much more grandiose than what I think, um, Mr. Suriel had in mind.
Was he thinking about paying for it?
Um, I don't know. That's, it's really, I wasn't a part of the meeting that they had. It was, uh, he just, um, was making a suggestion. And so Howard and I felt that it was something that we needed to talk to council about as to whether we wanted to, um, is there any interest to pursue some conversation about something like this?
Yeah, if there's no interest, I really don't wanna have staff spending time on something that really, there's no interest.
I mean, I can pull out the old waterfront master plan and give you pictures of, of what those things looked like and.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, send that to us and then if somebody wants to move it forward, they can tell Howard that they wanna.
I mean, it's, and we're not talking about perhaps maybe that, but is there some interest in something? Um, so.
Yeah, 'cause the bridge is kinda, you know, I mean, it's not the most attractive bridge anyway, so adding something, it's kinda like putting, you're talking about adding something to the bridge and the entranceway.
Or maybe the Harbor Walk. We're not talking about banners on the bridge.
But you wouldn't be able to see it. If, if you're coming over the bridge, you wouldn't be able, really be able to see it from the road.
Auto traffic or pedestrian traffic?
Both.
If it's down on the harbor.
You can see it. You can see the Harbor Walk from the bridge.
You can see the Harbor Walk.
You just don't know that.
We don't know that we want people taking their eyes off the road for that long.
Send that to Howard and then.
You know, just cause them to take their first ride as soon as they get off the bridge.
And then there's DOT.
What?
Then there's DOT to deal with. Well, if we don't put it, yeah, if we don't put it on the bridge, but it's on the Harbor Walk, but it would draw attention.
Right.
It could be something people could see.
Send us the ideas and then we can socialize it with Howard. And if somebody thinks they wanna champ, champion that cause, then they will.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, we are to citizens' comments. Any topic? Come to the podium, please state your name and the timer will start.
Marie Rose Punta Gorda. Uh, history lesson number forty-two of a continuing series. In about the year two thousand three, there was a large two or three hundred do, three hundred pound pig living in a garage in Punta Gorda Isles. So, erase nothing from your imagination. Two quick comments, uh, on the Vietnam Wall. And I think it was sixty minutes the other day, I saw that the National Parks pick up any remembrances that are left at the wall on a daily basis. And I think that you'll find that once the wall is established here, that is gonna happen. And we've got, we really ought to consider what's gonna happen to those goods, whether they are preserved as kind of a memory or if they're trashed. The other thing that I'd like to comment on is the wall is there's a tribute to the people that served in Vietnam and the guys that died. I think it's totally appropriate that we invite people to come and see it. I do not think it's appropriate for us to commercialize it. And that's just a general comment, not a specific. Thank you very much.
Uh, Jay Buckley, uh, Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance. Uh, just a couple of quick things. We've gotten some calls or some emails regarding, uh, correspondence that's gone out either from, um, city or from, uh, realtors, uh, saying that the cut is probably going to be estimated three to four years. Uh, and so I called Hans Wilson and he reiterated that he signed a contract with the city for six hundred and sixty days, which should be designed and permitting. And I said, then beyond that, uh, when that six hundred and sixty days is completed, uh, what are you estimating construction time? It's only a three hundred-foot cut. He said, I would estimate three to four months. So I think we've gotta keep our, uh, we've gotta keep our correspondence accurate according to what you've already signed, agreed upon. I also have, regarding that, I've had some inquiries about, uh, who's gonna pay for it. And of course, I've already announced that the city has, uh, contracted with a firm to, uh, figure out assessment and so forth. And they said, well, you know, with all the other activity that's going on in this city, bike paths, uh, walk, harbor walks, et cetera, uh, why, and taxpayers are paying for all of this, why are the taxpayers not paying for the cut? And I have, uh, and I cleared this with Bill, I was hoping he's gonna hang around here a minute, but this goes back to April of two thousand fifteen. And, uh, I think at the, this was minutes of the Boaters Alliance, uh, and it was at, so the council meeting prior to that, Bill Albers, uh, said, former mayor Bill Albers stated that historically, most major amenities have come to fruition by financial windfalls. Perhaps the recent agreement to sell city land to Fisherman's Village for three and a half million dollars could be the windfall for this project. Do you all, do you all remember that?
Mm-hmm.
He remembered it. So, that, uh, might be some consideration. I know the assessment, uh, portion has been addressed. So you'll have some numbers and so forth to work with, but I just wanted to give you some food for thought and what's been coming. The other thing I just quickly wanna mention is, in all the planning of the waterfront, that waterfront activity center is not going to be small. If you take the square footage of the bayfront, the square footage of the present boat club, add them together, we are working now, uh, there's, I've been in contact with the boat club. We together, I think it's about twelve thousand five hundred square feet. Not that we need a building that size, but I caution, you know, with the flood laws, that new building is going to be razed. There's gotta be boat storage under it. There's gotta be, and everything's gonna have to be on one floor, because residents on Reta are not going to be happy with a two-story building, blocking their view of the harbor. So in this planning, and I agree with Kim, uh, one hundred percent. It's gotta be a hu, a one-way street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we are adjourned.